Okay. Can Maria Stipe lead us in our invocation? And we'll ask Councilmember Klumpenstein to lead the pledge.
Sure. If everybody could please stand and prepare yourselves according to your faith. Dear Lord, we ask for your presence here this evening. Bestow your blessings on our deliberations so that we may have the benefit of your wisdom and integrity. Help us to make the best decisions for all those who live and work in our community. Amen.
This place can't overpart. Repeat after me. I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good crowd here today. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and recess the City Council. And we will convene the Garden Grove Housing Authority. Madam Clerk, can you do a roll call?
Commissioner Beckles?
Here.
Commissioner Klumpenstein?
Here.
Commissioner Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Here.
Chair Bridgum?
Here.
And let the records show that Commissioner Tan Nguyen, Commissioner Dovein, Commissioner Jones are absent tonight.
Okay, very good. So I have received a number of speaker cards, but I don't think it's for the Housing Authority. I think they wanna wait till the council meeting. So I'll ask, does anybody here want to directly address the Housing Authority? Not the City Council, but the Housing Authority? Okay. So seeing none, I will close open communications, oral communications. And we will move on to 2A.
Item 2A is approval of a preliminary award letter between the City of Garden Grove, Garden Grove Housing Authority, and New Tamerlane LLC. This is a joint action item with the City Council. And Ms. Colver-Rubias is here to give the report.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Tonight, we have a presentation for you. The item before you tonight is consideration of a preliminary award letter between the Garden Grove Housing Authority, the City of Garden Grove, and the developer, New Tamerlane LLC. The award letter provides the developer an enforceable commitment of housing funds to implement substantial rehabilitation and reset the affordable housing covenants for the New Tamerlane project located behind the Sheraton Hotel on Tamerlane Drive. Tamerlane properties consist of fifteen multifamily properties with a total of seventy-eight units. In October 2022, the prior owner sold and assigned all rights and obligations under the original agreements to the developer, New Tamerlane LLC. On October 11, 2022, the Housing Authority and City approved an amendment that extended the maturity dates of eight city loans and the expired affordability covenants for forty-nine of the seventy-eight units in the original Tamerlane agreements until December 31, 2025. Under this amendment, the developer, Housing Authority, and City agreed to work towards a restructure of all loans, determine the scope of substantial rehabilitation for all properties, and reset the affordability period for all the units. The developer's proposal intends to preserve and covenant all seventy-eight units as affordable housing for tenant households of extremely low, very low, and low income at an affordable rent for fifty-five years. This includes an increase of eighteen covenanteded units as compared to the previous agreement, which only restricted sixty of the seventy-eight units, eight units for extremely low-income tenants at thirty percent of the area median income, eight units newly dedicated as ADA compliant, serving residents with accessibility needs, and cause substantial rehabilitation to all buildings and seventy-eight units. Rehabilitation includes, but is not limited to, interior renovations of all units with new kitchen and bathroom upgrades, interior paint, new flooring, new doors, new lighting, electrical upgrades, HVAC replacement. Major systems upgrades include electric subpanels and plumbing re-pipe, new water distribution systems, hot appliance replacement. Exterior renovations include reimagined facades, new roof system, wood replacement, new windows, exterior paint and stucco, demolition of existing non-conforming garages and carports, reconstructed staircases and landings, and landscape renovations. Additional amenities will include the addition of a property manager's office, a community room to provide social services to all residents, a tot lot, and two ADA-compliant laundry facilities. In order to make the project financially feasible, the developer is requesting a subsidy of new funds of up to $3,646,000 sourced equally from the Low and Modern Income Housing Asset Fund and from the Permanent Local Housing Allocation Fund, otherwise known as PLHA, or up to eight project-based vouchers, and a restructure of all fifteen loans in a reset principal amount of $8,879,321, which totals a new Garden Grove loan amount of $12,519,321. The developer would also be submitting an application to the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee, otherwise known as TCAC, for reservation of state and federal tax credits. This TCAC funding reservation, plus investor equity, construction and permanent financing, and Garden Grove refinancing an additional subsidy will facilitate successful implementation of the New Tamerlane project. The developer's mission is to create and preserve quality affordable housing and to empower low-income individuals and communities throughout, through social services and community building. They have constructed or acquired and rehabilitated over twenty thousand affordable housing apartments and homes throughout the West. Tonight, you're asked to consider approval of the item. That concludes my presentation. And the developer, special counsel, and city staff are available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. This is a joint item that'll also be part of the council. Is there any questions of staff?
No questions, but I know we've all been looking forward to this night for a while. This is gonna be a huge improvement. This'll be new inside and out of buildings that were built in the fifties and sixties. No one will be displaced. The residents there will be able to stay if they want to. And it's just gonna provide a lot of affordable housing for the next fifty-five years. So I'm in favor of it.
So I just have a quick note. Thank you so much to the staff for spending extra time yesterday just to give me the detail. The reason is not just, you know, all the things that they present, but we want to make sure that the benefit's gonna go to the people, not just the builder. And so yesterday, we looked at, you know, how much they would charge the tenant and making sure that, yeah, this is affordable, you know, to help the people be able to take the benefit of it. So I just want to take the opportunity and make that note to our resident, knowing that, yes, our city staff look into it, and we're making sure that this will benefit our people. That was it.
Thank you so much. This is an amazing partnership and collaboration. I couldn't be more thrilled about this project. I'm grateful and excited that it sits in District Five, behind sort of the shadow of the hotels this community is sitting here and now sort of gets a light sort of shone on them and shown some love, which I think is much needed. It's wonderful that no one is going to be displaced. I love the mid-mod aesthetics that will be incorporated in this project. It's so clean and modern, bringing in elements of public art and opportunities for community services and community center, which is just gonna build and I think strengthen that community, which is already so strong. Again, this is just an incredible project. Thank you to staff for putting together this report. And again, just the collaboration between all the players here. And I hope that the residents, whether you live in that community or in that area or not, take a little time to look over this project and this staff report and some of the renderings that are shown is truly incredible and I think a historic project for the city and District Five. So I couldn't support it more. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd also like to thank staff for their hard work and to the developer for this project, the care and attention that you placed into it, the addition of a community center to provide resources, the beautification and rehabilitation of these particular units. I've always felt strongly, and I've always shared this on the dais, that I don't think because someone is coming from a position where they need a little extra help, that they should be living in squalor and that we're providing them a place to live with dignity, resources to help them thrive in our community. And I think that's critical. I think the other part of it is, you know, we have a lot of folks in our community who desperately want and need affordable housing units. And they always ask, like, why aren't we building more? And I think through this presentation, you saw it is not cheap to build. It takes a lot of the city's budget to invest, and we are taking that time to do that, but we also have limited resources. So I'm really glad that we have a representative in the room that hears that and that can fight for bringing more dollars down to help cities like ours make sure that our money is able to go directly back to our residents and allow them to live with dignity in the City of Garden Grove. And so I overwhelmingly support this project. And thank you for all the care and attention that you placed in providing that for us to support.
Any other comments?
Well, I do concur with the rest of you. You know, I don't think it's too much. People are living in their low income, but is it too much an asset? They have a nice place to live, you know? These aren't Taj Mahals, but you know what? We all saw the pictures of what it looked like and what it's going to look like, and it's really great. It's gonna provide a little bit of pride for those folks that are living in the area. There's also some amenities there for the kids to be able to play in a safe environment, in a safe area, isolated into the cul-de-sac there. So there won't be cars zooming by and all this kind of stuff. So I really like that component and how they incorporated the artistic portions of it. So with that being said, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, please, Mayor Protem.
I'll second to approve.
You have a motion? We have a second? Call for the... You want a third it? We'll do a third, too. And I guess we're doing a roll call vote, 'cause it's Housing Authority.
Commissioner Beckles? Commissioner Klumpenstein?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner Tralen?
Here.
Vice Chair Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
And Chair Bridgum.
Yes.
Motion received. Six yes votes.
Very good. Motion passes. Good job. And that will be concurrent with the council, so we'll be bringing that up again. Do we have any matters from Housing Commissioners? None? Okay. Then we will go ahead and adjourn the Garden Grove Housing Authority until, since April 25th, 2023, here at the Community Meeting Center. And we'll give Commissioner Beckles time to exit the platform here. Okay, I'd like to reconvene the Garden Grove City Council meeting. And I would request to pull Item 3A. Do I have a second? Okay, call for the vote.
Would you like me to read the title?
Oh, that's a good idea.
Okay. Item 3A is adoption of a resolution of commendation to Congressman Lou Correa for his years of service representing Garden Grove District 46. Motion received. Five yes votes.
Okay, we can proceed.
Okay. And with that, then we'll go to the community spotlight. Okay? So this evening, the Garden Grove City Council is pleased to honor Congressman Lou Correa, who is currently serving his fourth term in the United States Congress for California's 46th congressional district, which now represents the cities of Anaheim, Fullerton, Orange, Santa Ana, and Stanton. And it previously included Garden Grove up until California's recent redistricting process. So would Congressman Correa please come forward? You can stand right up here at the dais.
Is this forward?
And it's probably better while she reads this that you face the crowd, so you're facing the camera.
You can do whichever one you want. We'll give you your preference. Okay, Congressman Correa is a longtime Orange County resident with deep local roots, who has spent his career fighting to protect the American dream. Congressman Correa has represented the city of Garden Grove for two decades, starting from his time in the California State Assembly, State Senate, and as an Orange County supervisor. Throughout his time in public service, Congressman Correa has worked tirelessly to support and uplift hard-working families who call Garden Grove home. Congressman Correa secured millions in federal funding for vital community projects such as park improvements for Hester Basin Park, Jardine de los Niños, and West Haven Park. He's also achieved a no-cost, zero-emission transportation alternative for Orange County Transportation Authority's Santa Ana-Garden Grove Rails to Trails and more. Over the past several years, Congressman Correa has corresponded with and assisted over seventeen thousand Garden Grove residents, recovered nearly forty thousand dollars in monetary awards for Garden Grove families in need, nominated three students from Garden Grove to United States Service Academies, and most recently selected three students from Garden Grove High School as his Congressional App Challenge winners. Currently, Congressman Correa serves on the House Judiciary Committee, as well as the House Homeland Security Committee, and is the ranking member of the House Border Security Subcommittee. He is also co-chair of the Congressional Vietnam Caucus. At this time, the mayor and City Council would like to present Congressman Lou Correa with a resolution of commendation in recognition and appreciation of his years of service representing Garden Grove District 46. Without a doubt, his time serving the Garden Grove community will remain part of his legacy among many other celebrated achievements. Congratulations.
Yeah. Garden Grove produces some good folks there.
Yeah, we do.
I happen to think so.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Just wanted to thank the council and the City of Garden Grove for all the opportunity to serve you for all these years. Just trying to do my job, bring back the resources that all of you have paid for as taxpayers, and make sure we get our fair share, and of course, respond to all of you as voters and a democratic society. This is a very unexpected pleasure, although it's kind of scary that I'm not gonna be around Garden Grove.
Change the line back.
I'm gonna make the argument that you should still invite me to the Strawberry Festival.
You're always invited, yeah.
I'm gonna still shop at Costco. I'm gonna still shop at my favorite store, Home Depot. And you'll find me Sundays at Christ Cathedral. So I'll continue to be a big part of this community of Garden Grove. I'm not going away. I'm just shifting a little bit. But I will continue to work with all of you to make sure we represent your best interests in Washington, DC. And thank you very much. You have no idea how much this means to you. Muchas gracias. This is going to Washington.
All right, very good. I think Councilman Nguyen would like to say a few words.
This is a year almost coming. I had requested this before. You were no longer our congressman, so I wanted to be able to present this to you with my colleagues while you were still our congressman, but better late than never. Sir, I think I speak from personal experience, having been an intern for you. It's going on ten years that I've now known the congressman. I started off as a young intern in his office when he was a state senator. He gave me my first opportunity into state government and local politics, and I literally would not be here today as a councilwoman if it had not been for him opening the door and giving me the honor and privilege to serve my community. As a result of that, I continued my path as an elected representative. He swore me in in 2016 when I first won. And the reason why we all chuckled when I said, "Smile, sir," is 'cause once a staffer, always a staffer, and we have this saying when we staff him that we always have to remind him to smile in pictures, 'cause he looks so serious. But it's been an honor and privilege to have you as a mentor and have your guidance and your advice, not that I always take it, but to be able...
That is true.
But to be able to call on you and have you as a mentor. Again, I would not be here if it wasn't for you. And I know that it's been an honor and privilege alongside my colleagues to be able to present this, and thank you for your years and years of service to Garden Grove. And more specifically, thank you so much for helping us receive funding for our parks desperately needed here in the city of Garden Grove. And so no one can question your devotion to this city, the fact that you spend your time here and your care and attention to us. And we will definitely miss you, but we're grateful that you'll still find time to spend time here with us, and we hope to see you at the Strawberry Festival in a few months.
Please, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go Argonauts!
All right, very good. Would like to pull Item 3B for the next presentation. Entertain a motion? Okay. Motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Okay, do we have Rachel Rodriguez in the audience?
We do. And this is for the celebrating April is Donate Life Month, and you have a proclamation for her.
We do. Will you be reading the proclamation? Yeah, let's do that. Let's do that.
I will read it. So this is the... This is the proclamation for Donate Life Month. Whereas organ, tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need, whereas 106, 474 individuals nationwide are on the national organ transplant waiting list, and on average, seventeen people die each day while waiting due to the shortage of donated organs. Whereas the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic and African-American communities, whereas more than 600,000 units of blood per year are required to meet the need in California. Whereas each year, there are 18,000 patients in need of volunteer marrow donors, whereas a single individual's donation of the heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives. Donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of more than 75 others, and a single blood donation can help three people in need. Whereas millions of lives each year are saved and healed by donors of organs, tissues, marrow, and blood, whereas the spirit of giving and decision to donate are not restricted by age or medical condition. Whereas over 16 million Californians have signed up with the state-authorized Donate Life California Donor Registry to ensure their wishes to be organ, eye, and tissue donors are honored. Whereas California residents can sign up with the Donate Life California Donor Registry when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID cards at the California Department of Motor Vehicles. And whereas California residents interested in saving a life through living kidney donation are encouraged to visit www.livingdonationcalifornia.org for more information. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Garden Grove City Council recognizes April 2023 as Donate Life Month in the city of Garden Grove. And in doing so, we encourage all Californians to check "yes" when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID card, or by signing up at www.donatelifeCalifornia.org April 11, 2023.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council. Just try to get through this. My story is a story of tragedy, of hope, and of purpose. Thank you. In 2010, I became a grandmother for the first time. And I was just so excited, you know, to welcome a grandchild. My son's first born, and I had so many plans, so many plans. I didn't know at the time that those plans would be short-lived. My son, Daniel, and the baby's mom had a breakup, unfortunately, and it was a very toxic environment. And so my son chose to leave the relationship with the understanding that he wanted to be in his child's life. Unfortunately, when a new person was brought into the mother's life, that promise was taken away from my son. And so my son no longer had contact with his little boy, and me, as a grandmother, did have that contact either. So we were actually in the process of fighting for visitation rights to have his rights as a father upheld when I received a phone call in 2011. In 2011, my baby Malachi was sixteen months old when I received the phone call that Malachi had an accident, and he had fallen and hit his head on a toy and was now in a coma. For three days, we awaited, hoping and praying that God would give us that miracle that would breathe life back into our baby. Unfortunately, the tests were done, and baby Malachi was declared brain dead at the time. My son and the baby's mom both had agreed to donate his organs. We were finally able to take my son back home after all of that time in the hospital waiting. We woke up the following morning to sheriff's detectives at our house. And the moment Malachi was declared brain dead, his case went from accidental to homicide, a painful reality that somebody was responsible for our baby's death. We were told at that point that the sheriff's detectives had told my son that maybe we should reconsider organ donation, because our purpose then was to fight for justice for Malachi. Somebody would be held accountable. So my son had stopped the process, and we caravan to the hospital to say our final goodbyes to our baby. And it was surreal to see our beautiful, happy, giggly, beautiful little boy with so many injuries to him. But my son, in the end, reversed his decision, and baby Malachi went on to save the lives of four people. He saved a nine-month-old with his liver. This is the two-year-old little girl that received his heart. This was her right before transplant. This was our baby right before. She was diagnosed with cardiomyopathy at three months old. And so she lived most of her life in a hospital setting. Due to the beauty of organ donation and the fact that our baby was able to save her, this little girl, fast forward today, is now running marathons. This little girl is now 13 years old. She ran the Orange County Marathon and recently just did another half marathon with his little heart. That is the beauty of organ donation, and that is the hope part of our story. Malachi also went on to save the life of a 21-year-old, who is now living life and traveling and making beautiful memories with her family, able to work. All of these things would not have been possible had it not been for the transplant. He also did save a 65-year-old woman. The fact that a 16-month-old could save two adults is because the kidney is actually, it actually grows to a recipient's size. So that's how our baby at 16 months old was able to save the lives of two adults. I became a One Legacy Ambassador in honor of my grandson. My final moments with my baby, I made him a promise and that promise was to share his story even through the tears because he was important, his life was important and his story needs to be told. So for a decade now, I've been a One Legacy Ambassador, um, in order to do so, I recently, um, am able to be blessed to be a part of, of a book, um, that'll be coming out at the end of, of the month, to be able to continue to share that story. So this is, um, I, I, I'm appreciative of the city of, of Garden Grove giving me this honor because this is, um, this is part of that promise. My baby would have turned 13 years old, uh, a few weeks ago and so these are my presents to him. These are the things that I do in order to keep his memory alive. So I thank you so much for the opportunity to, um, to not only share his story, but your, um, support of our organization. Thank you.
All right, we'd like to, uh, pull lastly, uh, item 5A forward. Entertain a motion?
Yeah, I'll move it forward.
A second.
Motion and a second, we'll call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Clerk will read the title?
And item 5A is the adoption of a proclamation recognizing April as Good Neighbor Shared Awareness Month as requested by the city council. And I believe that, uh, that was something that you brought forward? No?
That was me.
It was you. I'm sorry.
That's quite all right. And, uh, can we get the resolution read again?
Sure, absolutely. So, um, and I do believe we have a representative from, uh, the Waymaker Group, um, or our former council member, Chris Beard, is he here?
You guys want to step forward while the, while she reads this?
Why don't you step forward, I, or whomever you would like to bring forward to receive this, but, um, we, we'll make a presentation after we read the proclamation. So, um, this proclamation is, uh, called the Good Neighbor Shared Air Awareness Month, Smoke Free in Multi-Unit Housing, um, proclamation. Whereas the American Public Health Association has designated the week of April 3rd through 9th, 2023 as National Public Health Week to share public health topics important to friends, family, and community members. Whereas secondhand smoke poses serious health threats to children and adults for residents of multi-unit housing, for example apartment buildings and condominiums, secondhand smoke can be a major concern. It can migrate from other units and common areas and travel through doorways, cracks in walls, electrical lines, plumbing, and ventilation systems. Whereas California residents are protected from secondhand smoke in virtually all workplaces and public places, including outdoor venues. Whereas Garden Grove has the distinction of having one of the lowest per capita smoking rates at 5.6% throughout California and is committed to further lowering the per capita smoking rate by supporting, educating, and referring residents to cessation programs and services. Whereas 31.2% of households in Garden Grove live in multi-unit housing, yet the number of voluntary smoke-free residential multi-unit housing is limited. Whereas surveys indicate a significant number of Garden Grove residents living in multi-unit housing are vulnerable to being exposed to secondhand smoke with 84% of residents preferring to live in a smoke-free environment if the choice existed. Whereas a Good Neighbor effort to increase smoke-free multi-unit housing options will reduce the number of residents involuntarily exposed to secondhand smoke that will positively impact overall health outcomes, especially for those with chronic diseases. And whereas the American Lung Association, American Heart Association, American Cancer Society, and key multi-unit housing stakeholders are working to educate and raise awareness of the demand for smoke-free op, options among housing providers. Now therefore, the Garden Grove City Council does hereby proclaim April 2023 as Good Neighbor Shared Air Awareness Month and hereby recognizes the need to promote awareness and services to help residents quit smoking and encourage those continued, continuing smokers to refrain from smoking with, within any shared housing or public common areas. Uh, adopted, uh, this day, April 11th, 2023. [applause]
Oh, we're good.
Yeah.
Very good. The podium is yours.
I'm so used to being here for just three minutes. No, we have all the time, I'm just kidding, we don't want to be here until 2:00 AM. But we wanted to thank, um, the city council and the city staff for everybody who've taken the time to, uh, make this proclamation. We're incredibly passionate about making the city of Garden Grove a healthier, safer environment for everyone and, um, the Garden Grove residents that we've talked to, everyone in the community outreach to, um, just wanted to say thank you so much for your time to taking, um, to talking to us and telling your stories. Uh, we've met so many people, um, the statistic that we always say, I know we've told you 10,000 times, but tobacco, um, is the number one cause of preventable cancer deaths and I feel like every single person we've talked to have had an experience, um, touching upon that. And so in the memories of the people that we care about and, um, to make sure that the next generation that, um, lives in Garden Grove and beyond in Orange County and beyond of that, um, we want to make sure that it is a healthier generation, um, for the next group. We want to make sure that the world is a better place than, um, we leave the world a better place than, um, how we came and how it arrived. And so I do think, um, that the fact that Garden Grove is taking steps to acknowledge that, to make sure that we're taking measurements to help people, um, who want to quit smoking, most of them actually want to quit smoking, people who already are smoking and, um, making sure that we're getting the resources out there, making sure that we're taking a stance on becoming, um, a smoke-free community and encouraging that is a huge step. So we wanted to thank you and acknowledge you. You may be giving us this proclamation, but we want to really, um, make the proclamation how incredible the city council is for, um, taking these steps. So thank you so much.
[applause]
Hi, everybody, I'm Chris Beard, former council member and still a former smoker too. And I'm so, so happy to be here tonight and I want to thank you all personally. Uh, I want to thank the city staff, everybody who was a part of this, but, um, I, I'm glad we're sending the message out to smokers out there. Uh, your city cares, it's out there, you need help, it, people are there to help you and so, um, but I would also like to express my appreciation to the Waymakers Group, Dan, Grace, and Teresa, the nonprofit group that got me involved. Uh, that phone call from Dan helped me get involved in something that's really touched my life and helped me so much. So I want to thank them and recognize them for all their hard work, all the research, all the data, all the walking, talking, and getting down there and, and going to the multiple dwellings that it takes and, um, I see this as a, as a beginning of something very positive going forward. Uh, it shows the commitment of the city and the health of, of the community and, uh, again, I want to thank everybody and especially these people for doing all the work it takes to get to this point for proclamation and I know we can carry this forward even to a better extent, so thank you all very much.
[applause]
Hi, everyone, thank you again. I won't add too much, um, I think everyone already, um, shared how much we appreciate each of you. Thank you for your care, we can really tell just meeting with each of you that you guys really care for your people and your community, so we really appreciate that and we're not just, you know, saying it, we really can see that you guys do care about each individual and each community that we have within the Garden Grove community. So thank you for your hearts, um, thank you for your concern and thank you for, um, just the care that you have for each and every one person. I also wanted to shout out all the other members that we have here joining us today. Um, there's also many members that wanted to come, just couldn't make it, um, but we have managers, owners, um, people from healthcare facilities, um, other tobacco prevention community partners as well, all out here just to thank you for your efforts and also to acknowledge just the care that you have for your community. So thank you again, we really appreciate it.
I guess I would just add that, uh, the approving this proclamation really shows your commitment to providing more options, uh, to people, uh, so that they can live in smoke-free environments and I love the part about helping people that continue to smoke to find, uh, cessation services so they can quit. And I think we've taken a big step forward to reduce the harms caused by tobacco and I just can't thank all of you enough and it was so nice to get to know you over the last several months. Thank you so much. [applause]
You gotta take that big plaque with you.
Yeah.
All right, well, that, uh, concludes presentations and spotlights today. Um, we will go to, uh, oral communications. Um, I do have a number of cards here, so please be respectful of the other speakers and keep your comments to three minutes. Um, or, yeah, so we will go, uh, Abdell Garcia.
I would like to start off by saying it is an absolute honor being upon your presence. My name is Abdell Garcia and I'm a part of a team-led civic club called Doig Action Committee from Doig Intermedia and we want change. Have you noticed the amount of graffiti in the past year? Well, we have. Our club went on a walking field trip in October and we were overwhelmed with the amount of graffiti we saw. It's everywhere, on city-owned walls, elementary, intermediates, high schools, and even our preschools. I don't know about you, but seeing graffiti on the wall isn't the most cheerful or welcoming thing. It's overall unwelcoming and makes parents and kids worried. That's why I want to see change for the betterment of our community. But that's what, uh, sorry, uh, we know that Michaela Taylor has already made a mural on Stewart and Rocking Course by Peters Elementary. We want to see something similar on our side for town. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is it Giovanna?
Hi, my name is Giovanna Miller and I'm from Doig Action Committee. Building on what Abdell said, there's a wall on the corner of Trask and Roxy with a lot This is the same place that previous Doig Action Committee members put up a stoplight and we want to continue the legacy of making a change in our community. But we don't just want any mural, we want one that can bring people together and make students feel safe. We talked to an artist named Nora Martin Hall and this is another work she did in the U.S. Bank of Los Angeles. We told her that we wanted something that includes the students from our community. Imagine this, as hundreds of students walk home from school, they'll get to see a mural that represents them and gives them a voice. Her design idea is to have young people from our own community of District 6 model for the mural itself to represent us. This is what we hope future, future generations can see as they walk along our streets. Thank you for your time.
Joanne, is it Joanna Grabarin? Am I saying that right? Probably butchered it. Can you tell us your correct name?
Uh, Joanna Karabarin.
Oh, okay, very good. Nope, got that one wrong.
Hi, I am Joanna Karabarin and you have heard of our ideas for a mural. I would like to talk about the cost and our request for city council's help in funding this project. The wall on Roxy and Trask is a public space, so we are looking for public funding. The cost of a mural would be around $7,000. Although this may seem like a large amount of money, most other artists would require a larger amount of money for the wall space we want to use. We need the help of influential leaders like you to help influence younger people who have, um, who have suffered a great loss during this pandemic and make the world, make our community more positive. Um, and we are open to your ideas about how to fund this project and looking forward to working with you. Thank you for your time.
Schwatia? You guys are really throwing me for a loop tonight. And it's spelled two different ways too.
Well, I tried to put the pronunciation on there, how it's phonetically spelled.
There's no last name though?
Singluth.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so it's Schwetha Singluth. Hi, everybody, um, hi, Mr. Mayor, hi, City Council. Um, my name is Schwetha Singluth and I am a teacher at Doig Intermedia and I am the club advisor for Doig Action Committee and these students that you just heard from are 12, 13, and 14 years old and, um, it has been my complete honor and pleasure to work with these three activists this school year and I, please, please, please do not mistake their youth as a lack of maturity and passion because over the past several months, I have witnessed them discuss, debate, and brainstorm solutions and ideas to solve problems in our community in District 6. After their speech night in January, graffiti wasn't even on the, in the discussion at all. Um, they all spoke on very different topics and they came together after that speech night and came to this idea of getting a mural in our community because what they wanted was student voice, what they wanted is a safer community. Um, and I grew up in a neighborhood very similar to District 6 in San Bernardino and I would have loved my city council to step up and support, um, art and safety in our community and we're hoping that we have that opportunity with you here, um, this, this year. So, thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Tran? I think I got that one right.
Hi, everybody, I'm back. My name is Teresa Tran, I'm the Community Engagement Coordinator at a nonprofit called Waymakers. I'm also a Garden Grove resident, born and raised here. And, um, today I wanted to give a little bit of an update that our team is doing our due diligence and so, um, this past few weeks, we reached out to the smoke-free multi-unit housing complexes in Garden Grove. We have a list of 70 apartments, so 30 of them listed themselves on apartment.com as smoke-free. So we reached out to them either on phone call, visiting in person, discovering that a lot of them don't have leasing offices and so calling them instead, lesson was learned. Um, and also Cindy Chan also made a guest appearance and visited one of the facilities with us, so thank you so much for taking the time to do that. And, um, from our contacts of those three, um, apartment complexes that are already smoke-free, we were in touch with six of them and, um, for all six representatives that we chatted with, um, they were all very supportive, um, neutral, or most of them actually very, very supportive and excited of the concept of a smoke-free multi-unit housing recognition program and that's essentially, I wanted to get their opinion, like, it was like, this, this hasn't happened, however, if it, if it did, what if it did? What would you, what would your thoughts be? What are your opinions? And they love the idea and, um, uh, one of them, one, really wanted to be here tonight, however, uh, she's at a conference and so she wrote a letter that I am, am supposed to pass out to you. And, um, if you can please pass this out to them, thank you so much, Terry. Um, so I'm gonna read out the letter to you and it says, Dear Garden Grove City Council Members, my name is Zanja Munyas. I am the Community Manager for Orange Tree Apartments and a resident of the community since 2014. Orange Tree Apartments is a multifamily 80-unit, smoke-free community. Since implementing this smoke-free policy, we have found that residents and staff appreciate the amenity. Smoke-free has reduced the exposure to secondhand smoke, the air quality throughout the community as well as the inside of the resident's apartment has increased the quality of life for residents and staff. Maintenance staff can take care of maintenance issues without having to worry of the exposure of secondhand smoke. Being smoke-free has also saved community money in turn, turnover cost units and has significantly reduced the fire risk inside buildings. Smoke-free science and policies have been instrumental in bringing in interest prospects and keeping high occupancy, occupancy. has increased the quality of life for residents and staff. Maintenance staff can take care of maintenance issues without having to worry of the exposure of second-hand smoke. Being smoke-free has also saved community money in turnover cost units, and has significantly reduced the fire risk inside buildings. Smoke-free signs and policies have been instrumental in bringing in interest prospects and keeping high occupancy. And most of our traffic leads from people driving by and seeing smoke-free signs in the community and resident referrals. We do not have now leasing signs, yet we get high volumes of interest. The office receives calls from prospects wanting to reside in a community because of the smoke-free policy. It would be of great assistance if the city of Garden Grove would acknowledge smoke-free communities by listing smoke-free housing on the city's website or for choosing, for those choosing to live in smoke-free communities. And I believe having an official listing will bring onboard more smoke-free communities, which will benefit all of Garden Grove residents and surrounding communities. Thank you for your time.
Dan Gleason?
Hi, thank you. So, as I mentioned earlier, we spent the last several months meeting with many of you and with city staff and talking about our interest in smoke-free multi-unit housing. And we got a lot of information back, a lot of feedback from you. And that's where this idea was developed about a voluntary recognition program. And so, as Teresa mentioned, we sort of provided some framework for what this program might look like. We're calling it the Blue Star Clean Air Recognition of Excellence Multi-Unit Housing Program. So, it's the Blue Star Care Program. So, the way this would work is that all multifamily housing projects that fulfill certain requirements would be recognized through this program. They'd have to provide notice to staff and tenants that there's no smoking in the units. They would provide tobacco prevention education and cessation resources to their staff and to their tenants. They would include smoke-free amendments for their tenant agreements. And also, they would post smoke-free signage on the property, so it was very clear that the, it's a smoke-free property. The reason I'm here tonight is to let you know that this isn't the first time that we've had a voluntary recognition program in Orange County. In fact, the Orange County Healthcare Agency's Tobacco Use Prevention Program, for 20 years, ran what they called a five-star merchant program, and it was to recognize responsible tobacco retailers. And so, what they would do is they would send people in to evaluate the stores. And there were certain criteria that they had to meet to become a five-star merchant. One, they couldn't sell tobacco to anybody under the age of 21, and it's illegal. But what they would do is they would send minors in there to try to buy tobacco. And if they didn't buy it, then that was, if they didn't sell it to them, that was a good sign. The second thing is, they had to have signage in the store that indicated that it's illegal to sell tobacco to people under the age of 21. All the merchants had to have all of their tobacco products behind the counter or under lock and key. They weren't able to sell single cigarettes or cigarettes in packages less than 20. And also, they insisted that they couldn't sell alcohol to people under the age of 21. So, if the merchants met these five criteria, they were a five-star merchant, the healthcare agency would provide these folks with a certificate that they could post at their property. And also, they would get public recognition by having their names put in the local newspaper. And in those cities where they have healthy store webpages, they would post these stores on their webpage. And so, anyway, the reason I'm here is just to let you know that there is a model in Orange County. We've done this before. And I'm hoping that you folks will consider doing it again. Anyway, thank you so much for your time.
Next speaker, Grace Lee, followed by Hang Wynn.
Hi, good evening. Thank you again. Really want to just appreciate you again for prioritizing the health and safety of our community. So, I just wanted to expand a little bit more about what the blueprint could look like. Again, this is really up to your decision in terms of what you think would be most appropriate to the city. But of course, we wanted to hopefully give you a little bit of idea of what that might look like to see if that might be something fitting for Garden Grove. So, as Dan had mentioned earlier, those four different elements could be key elements that we've seen to be very effective ways to include in a voluntary program. And I also wanted to share potentially what a recognition incentive could look like when it comes to a certificate of some sort. We have another speaker speaking later about how that's been something that business owners, as well as managers and owners, have been receptive to and very positive in terms of it being something that would be honorable and something that would incentivize them. So, I'm going to also pass this along over to you in order for you guys to have an idea of what the certificate could also look like, for something for you to also consider. And I also wanted to ensure you that although, obviously, there's the technical aspects of considering the logistics in terms of what the framework could look like, I do want to assure you that we have a team of experts. So, you all have a team of experts that are behind you in terms of providing any type of assistance that you need. And we know that a big part of the voluntary program is to have a very solid cessation support and solid cessation service for those that do want assistance in quitting. We know that that's a very important part of this. So, we also want to assure you that we do have local assistance. One entity that is very strong in supporting the local Garden Grove and Orange County community is Nulung. They are connected with Anaheim Regional, and we have a very strong connection with them and a very close contact that has expressed her support as well of this policy and this program to be able to provide cessation support. So, she wasn't able to join us tonight. She really wanted to, actually. So, I am conveying a message on her behalf. Her name is Jana, and she's our representative and contact from Nulung. So, this is her message in regards to the policy and program that she is supporting. She definitely wants to help those that want to quit tobacco, and the success of cessation programs has been very effective, including those in the AAPI Asian Pacific Islander Communities. We know that that's a big community in the Garden Grove population as well. And as the county's white cessation provider, Nulung has seen a great need for culturally tailored cessation services in Orange County. So, with bilingual staff, the AAPI communities in Orange County are able to receive these services from individuals from their own communities, so they feel comfortable and understand the challenges and successes of quitting smoking. This is why promoting these cessation services is so important in maintaining that quit status. So, we do want to assure you that we have the support and services available, and we have a team of experts. And so, we know that you're committed, and so we're also committed here to help you as well. Thank you so much.
We got Hang Wynn, followed by Casey Reynolds.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Hana Wynn. I'm the Executive Director of Bolt People Center for Community Advancement. We serve the Vindeese community throughout Orange County. I'm here to speak about the Smoke-Free Multi-Unit Housing Program. It is a voluntary program. In 2016, Bolt People was awarded with CDC funds to implement a racial/ethnic approach to community health program. We did the same type of voluntary policy program, but at private business plazas and local businesses. We were able to recruit about 62 plazas to implement this voluntary program. There was a need for consumers to come to these plazas throughout Orange County to have a smoke-free place. We wanted to reduce tobacco use and second-hand smoke. Through that policy, we became a member of the Tobacco and Vape Coalition of Orange County that was supported by the Tobacco Use Prevention Program with the Orange County Healthcare Agency. Through that, being a member of the coalition, we created a recognition program that, similar to what Dan mentioned earlier, this particular recognition gave a certificate to plaza owners and business owners who wanted to buy into this policy and honored them to support a healthier and smoke-free environment. We found that to be well-received with these business owners, because it is a certificate that they could put in their business, supporting a smoke-free environment. So, I'm here tonight to ask, to request to support the multi-unit smoke-free program. Thank you.
Casey Rails? Did I say it right?
It's Cassie.
Cassie, okay.
My name is Cassandra Reynolds. I go to Garden Grove High School, and I'm in ninth grade. Thank you, Garden Grove City Council, for considering a voluntary smoke-free multifamily housing program. This program is very important to me, because it will impact the community in a healthy way, such as preventing and stopping smoking in apartment complexes, so others are not affected by second-hand and third-hand smoke. It is important to me, because after seeing my grandpa, from my dad's side, addicted and hooked to smoking cigarettes every 30 minutes of the day, and him being hospitalized because of random body shutdowns, I don't want anyone else to go through my grandpa experience and still is experiencing. People like my grandpa need help quitting, and with this program, it can help educate the community about free resources to help them quit. In addition, this is very important, because people like my grandma experience second-hand smoke on a daily basis. She helps take care of my grandpa and make sure he is well, but the smoking won't stop. The smoking has made my grandma's asthma worse. She can't even live with my, with him because of his addictions. This voluntary smoke-free multifamily housing program encourages apartment owners to adopt smoke-free policies. These smoke-free policies would make sure people don't smoke inside the units. This would protect people's respiratory health, because others would not be affected from second-hand smoke through connected vents. It encourages smokers to not smoke inside, which means they would smoke less. Hopefully, it encourages them to quit smoking altogether. This program can help protect the community. Thank you for your time.
Chris Beard?
Hello again. Honorable Mayor Protam, members of the City Council, I am Chris Beard, and I'm a long-term Garden Grove resident. I'm here again tonight to advocate for any and all incentivized measures that encourage citizens to voluntarily limit their smoking in shared housing complexes. So, also, I'd like to take the opportunity to express my appreciation for your recognition and for the proclamation that you just presented in addressing this important health concern. The passage of the Good Neighbor Shared Air Proclamation is a clear message to citizens that our local residents, our local leaders, you, our policymakers, are concerned, compassionate, and committed to a healthy Garden Grove. The scientific evidence is indisputable. Direct and secondhand smoking is a serious health risk. The good news is, unlike some public health hazards, secondhand smoke exposure is preventable. I believe a Good Neighbor Shared Air Awareness Month can be a great start for affording smokers with cessation options, and diversion is an initiative worthy of your endeavors. To further help publicize the proclamation, it is possible to call upon the experience and past examples of how our city recognizes and lets its residents know about resources and program accessibility, resources that better help themselves, their surroundings, their environment, and their livelihood. As all one has to do is look at the city website to see such notable examples as Garden Grove Gem Program, which is a beautification program, the National Nine Out Program, the Buy and Guard Grove Program, the Free Bulky Item Pickup Service, the Garden Grove Distracted Driving Awareness, DOI Checkpoints, Foods for Garden Grove Social Media Challenge, recently, the CalOptima Health Partnership Initiative, Pledge for Water Conservation, and so, and the list goes on. I believe that the natural progression in helping people to quit smoking in a multi-unit complexes is via the city's remarkable ability to promote recognition programs that further worthwhile services and events. The city website dedicated to a Smoke-Free Good Neighbor Shared Air Recognition Program is a worthy candidate. Let the message going forward be that if you intend on quitting smoking for you, your family, or for the sake of your neighbors, then the city is willing and able to help direct you to services and resources to help you succeed. Again, I want to thank the City Council now and in the future for helping those seeking to quit smoking, and thus helping to prevent the dangers of second-hand smoke to others in multi-shared complexes. Thank you and good night.
Nicholas Dibs?
Well, it's a hard act to follow, these young people that spoke before and the Smoking Cessation Group. My name is Nicholas Dibs. I'm a teacher, educator. I'm here because, and let's connect the dots. You know, years ago, as one young student said, her grandfather has been smoking for years. Well, we have another addiction problem, and that is, we need to have cessation of the abuse of social media and technology, which is causing harm. And I played with, I played for you and the citizens of Garden Grove at the last council meeting on March 28th, excerpts of an interview that the U.S. Surgeon General gave. So, I encourage people to go listen to that if they missed it. We have a problem, you know, and like Chris said, Chris Beard said, awareness is the key, getting the word out. That applies not only to smoking cessation, but also cessation from abuse online, cyberbullying, et cetera. I need to remind you and the community that we had a fifth grader commit suicide because she was being bullied on, allegedly being bullied on Instagram. Two seventh graders committed suicide, tried to commit suicide, and this was all before the pandemic. That fifth grader was a student at Hazard Elementary School. What we have is what's called a digital cage. A digital cage refers to people being isolated, addicted on their phones, spending too much time. The children need more recreation. They need more exercise. They need to be outside. They need to connect more with their family and friends in person, and develop friendships and better connections with family. You passed today a proclamation that April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month. So, I want to bring to your attention, in the spirit of awareness, that two years ago in 2021, the city participated with the school district in supporting esports. Well, now, it's the scientific evidence has shown that esports is not a sport. Esports is a problem, because it increases screen time, it increases cyber addiction, it increases, there's studies on all of this stuff. And Dr. Nicholas Kaderis wrote a book called, and I have excerpts here for you from the book titled Digital Madness. So, I'm going to play just a portion of that. Well, anyway, he did research for the Department of Defense. I'm going to give each of you a copy of excerpts from his book, and also the email from Scott Stiles. I urge the City Council to not participate in esports anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. I am all out of pink cards here. Is there anybody who wishes to address the council that didn't get to yet? Well, let's start with you then. Come on up, ma'am. And just please say your name and address to the microphone.
Hi, my name is Velvet Victorian. I live in O'Neill's District, or Velvet Yvette Victorian. I prefer to be called Velvet. I just wanted to talk about, like the kid said, because I wasn't going to talk. But once the kids start talking and they hit some points that I like, I want to have no dumping signs put in the alleys. Especially in our district, it's a lot of graffiti. And I want you guys to consider parking passes for permits for areas that have a lot of tenants and a lot of cars, because a lot of people can't get parking. Some of the places have parking, some of them don't. But a lot of people take advantage, because they have the construction trucks. Then after they park there all night, then they dump their stuff all day. And I'm just, I'm tired of looking at it, you know? And I think that if we put the cost of the fines and a number to call to pick up the stuff, it will scare them to death. And maybe they'll stop doing it. That's all I have to say. I was good this time, see?
Mr. Sisk? Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the clerk.
Mr. Mayor, council members, and our wonderful city staff, I just have two quick things. This Tamerlane project, aren't there, I believe someone said there's like seventy-two units in this complex? Once it's all finished, is there going to be a homeowners association? How is this going to be maintained? And if, if there is going to be a homeowners association, are they going to then hire out a private homeowners association to run it for them? Because those can be very onerous. If it, if they are in fact low-income housing units, when you add association to, pardon me, on top of that, that might be a bit hard for some people to handle. And if there is a homeowners association, to ask those same people to now run it, that might be a little bit difficult. And one more thing, I believe someone said that the city of Garden Grove is going to invest twelve million dollars in this? If we're going to put that much money in it, can't we insist that it be smoke-free? I'm just saying. So, and that's all I got to say unless you want me standing here and sing for two minutes.
Be my guest.
Thank you.
Is there any other speakers who didn't turn in a pink card? Okay, seeing none. I'm going to go ahead and close oral communications. I do want to make a quick comment to the young students of Doig, I'm sorry, intermediate that came up and spoke today. You know, it's been my big thing since I got elected, the whole public art thing, and I've been pushing it pretty hard since I got elected. And I know Councilman Nguyen would love to meet with you guys. I would love to meet with you guys. Maybe we can brainstorm and figure out ways of, oh, and we could figure out ways of getting this thing funded for you guys. All right. So please reach out to both of us and we'll make sure something, that we make time for you guys.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay. So I will recess the council and I guess we'll go over to Successor Agency, Councilman O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. At this time, I'd like to call the Successor Agency Community Development meeting to order. If the clerk could please call the roll.
Member Brodigam?
Here.
Member Tran?
Here.
Member Cloughenstein?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Vice Chair O'Neill?
Here.
And let the record show that member dove in and Chair Jones are absent.
Thank you very much. We've already held oral communications simultaneously with council. We only have consent tonight. I'd be entertaining a motion.
Move it.
Second.
A motion, second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Thank you. Any matters from agency members? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting until the next regular successor agency meeting, April 25th in this chamber. Back to city council. Thank you.
We will reconvene the Garden Grove City Council meeting. Let's see where we're at. And I will entertain a motion for the balance of consent.
I'll move the balance.
I'll second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Call for the vote.
Okay. One moment while I catch up with you.
Sure. Technology is great.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
This thing, this thing glitched on me here. Hold on. All right. We will move on. Items consideration for A. And that is a, this, we, we got the presentation during the Housing Authority on Tamerlane property. So it's just a vote of the council. So we don't need to have a...
I'll move it. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Geez, this thing wants to be really touchy. All right. Four B. And I do believe we have a presentation.
Item four B is award a contract to Sully Miller Contracting Company for Acacia Neighborhood Improvements Project, which includes road, pavement, and waterline improvements. And Mr. Murray is here to give that report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy, Mr. Mayor Protam, and members of the council. Tonight, city council is being asked to award a contract to Sully Miller Contracting Company to construct street improvements for the Acacia neighborhood. The neighborhood is bounded by Stanford Avenue to the north, Garden Grove Boulevard to the south, Dale Street to the west, and Magnolia Street to the east. You've been provided with a key map that shows this area and also shows the general areas and limits of construction. This includes full-depth construction of roadways, installation of required water service laterals and meters, cold milling of existing pavement and replacement with an AC cap, installation of new curb, gutter, sidewalks, as shown on the map. And there wasn't any of those in existence before. Restoration of the traffic signing, striping, and pavement markings. And for the most part, there's, those weren't too much there to begin with. And the re-establishment of the centerline ties and monuments. It should be noted that several neighborhood meetings and meetings with individual property owners were held in order to gain consensus and to develop a mutually agreed-upon scope for this project. Personally, I'd like to recognize the hard work of city engineer Dan Candelaria and our engineering staff, specifically senior civil engineer Mark Office and associate engineer Mike Santos. A project like this requires a great deal of patience and customer service skills to bring forward. All of this work is to be completed at a cost of almost seven million dollars. Staff received and opened three qualified bids on March 21st of this year, and staff found Sully Miller Contracting Company to be the lowest responsible bidder. Should council decide to award this contract tonight, contractor can begin work in May and should be complete by the end of the year. This project was included in this year's capital improvement plan and will be paid for with Measure M2 funds, community development block grant funds, water funds, and various gas tax funds. This concludes staff's report and I'm available should you have any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of staff?
I'll go ahead and move it.
I do have one quick comment before we move it. I, I'm just really excited to see this. I know a lot of work that staff has gone into and it's tremendous amount of work. This area is in the first district of my district and there's no streetlights, no sidewalks, you know, and the people there have been screaming, why don't we have sidewalks? We got to push our strollers in the road. You know, the older folks, when they're walking around, they have to be in the road and cars going by them and they almost get hit. And there's all these stories. I know how challenging it is to get everybody on the same page to put a sidewalk in. Ninety percent of the people want a sidewalk. And then you always have those few people. So staff has really done an outstanding job to get a unanimous consensus in this area where everybody is like, yeah, let's do this. So I know how much work that took and I do want to thank staff for all the time they took on this. And I'll second, and I'll second that motion.
Okay.
We'll call for the vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Good. Okay, we'll move on to matters. And I guess instead of starting with me, we'll start with Councilman O'Neill.
Okay, I have nothing tonight, so it's...
Nothing? Very good. Very good. We'll move on. Councilman Tran?
Or Councilwoman Tran? Sorry.
Just a couple quick notes. So last two weeks, I got to attend the Senior Fireback event that, so they have a group and the lead of the group, her name is Hong Lee. So she started that group and it was just amazing to see how they have the senior coming out. And they were teaching the senior how to protect themselves, you know, when you go to places and you have to be aware and then know how to, you know, if someone grabbed you, what are you going to do about that? So, and when they start, they thank, they said thank to our city for giving them the opportunity to have it right next to the building right here. And not just teaching people how to do it, they also give away what the, the alarm that you could press or the pepper spray. So I just want to take the opportunity to say thank to the group. I told them that when I come back to our meeting, I'm going to promote that. So I keep that promise and I brought it here. The second thing, I just want to say thank to the staff and council member Stephanie for inviting me to the free compost giveaway. Well, our staff are amazing. So for today, I just want to recognize the resident. Everyone was so excited just to come and get the, you know, the free compost. People have that big sound effect. The line was so long all the way to Westminster. And I walked just to see, you know, how long it was and the people that were just like trying, everyone was just have big smile and, you know, greeting us. But also, they, they just say, you know, the positive about that what we do, the city, the staff doing for our resident. And even that little thing, but they appreciate the work that we do for our residents. So thank you. And the last one is about, let's see. Sorry, I'm just... Oh, there was, I went to, they call Mud Dock, and the water, yeah, yeah. So that was my first time and I just, they were invitation to our city council, so I came. But the great thing is that, you know how we have so much rent and so people want to know, okay, do we get any discount on the water rate or not? But it's going up. So then I asked the question and they gave us, you know, about the infrastructure and different thing. But I brought it here because we have people in the community were concerned about now that we have large chunk of snow, it's going to melt. So do we have the infrastructure to prevent the flood and different thing? So there will be several meetings that are coming up. So if anyone that interested in learning or giving input or hearing about the discussion, everyone is welcome at a public meeting. So that was it. I just want to bring it up here. Oh, last thing. I'm so impressed to see we have young students here tonight. It's just, if people pretend like we're all here, we're clapping even though normally we don't do that when people are speaking. But it's just amazing to see how not just the adult, but young kid or student come here and bring their voice because they know that people listen. So thank you.
And yeah, water, water is always very riveting. Those, those, those programs they put on. Councilwoman Cloughenstein.
Thank you. I just want to make mention of an event that's happening this week. The Garden Grove Neighborhood Association in partnership with Paws for Students and the Garden Grove Police Department are having a meet on Main called Walk a Mile in My Paws. That'll never get old to say. I love that. This event is designed to take a peek into the Garden Grove Comfort K9 Program, how it began, how it was, or how it is funded, and also how it functions. We'll have some special guests. The comfort dogs and their handlers will be in attendance, as well as Garden Grove Unified School District Vice Superintendent Valerie Shed and a representative from the John Reynolds Youth Support K9 Foundation. There'll also be an opportunity drawing to raise funding for this organization by auctioning off a private luncheon with the K9 support team. So that'll be excellent. It is this Thursday at 6:00 PM, right here at the Community Meeting Center. So on this National Pet Day, let's show some love for this K9 team and, and please show up and enjoy this event. It'll be great. Thank you.
Thank you. First up, on April 22nd, we have finally in my district, the Community Cleanup Day, and it will be at the Garden Grove Public Works Yard from 9:00 to 11:00 AM. I also want to highlight, I mentioned last meeting, Denim Day is April 26th. We will be meeting at 8:00 AM at the Andarondak Chairs just across the way. This way. Thank you. By the library, by the pond, as many of you will know, the bright chairs. We do this in celebration and honor and awareness for survivors of sexual assault by wearing denim as a result of a issue that happened in Italy. You'll hear more about it at the next meeting because I, I like tend to, like to share it right before the, the day. So if you are interested in knowing more about why we're participating, please tune in next meeting. And lastly, I just want to highlight the Doig Action Committee students that came to speak today. I've had the honor and privilege to visit with them multiple times over the years and hear them when they have their competitions. They always bring out really amazing topics and they put in a lot of work and effort into the research. And so I know that many of you have heard me speak on this dais about graffiti. We've implemented a lot more in our program to address this. And now we're hearing from students directly that they would like to see more public art. And I know all of us have spoken to that and want to see that happen. I would hope that we are able to have a meeting with these students and help them either through the council budget, pay for this mural, and have that go up near Doig Intermediate as it is the in-between of many different schools in that community. There's Clinton Elementary, Eisenhower, Santiago, and Doig. And so these students are walking to and from school, after-school activities. And I think it'd be a great location for an additional mural to be included. And so I know that I've met with them, mainly encouraging them to come here and speak so that folks, for my colleagues to hear from them. But this is something we've advocated for. I know during retreats, I've mentioned that I would love to see this as part of Art Parks and Rec, to have them have a mural program where they can solicit art and look for buildings to place them. If it's public facing, that's within our jurisdiction. And I would hope that we would promote and push for public art to take place, especially when we're having students directly ask for that. I know that Councilmember Brodigam expressed interest, so maybe if we had a meeting with staff, he and I could be included and we can report back to my colleagues about it. And that's all for me today. Thank you.
I do have one item this week. So last week, there was a fairly consuming structure fire on Valley View involving one of the strip malls. And talking with a lot of the residents and business owners in that location afterwards, nothing but positive feedback from the response of the fire department, how quickly they were there, the, the business owners in working with staff and trying to get back to normal as quickly as possible. Although we know there are going to be some, some issues when we try to get, you know, move forward with insurance companies and this type of thing. But I just want to let staff know, you know, the community has, has been very, very voiceless about the support of the city of Garden Grove and all applications for this tragedy. So with that said, I think there's four businesses that were totally destroyed by the fire. I think there was eleven total that got orange-tagged. So, but they're reopened now for the most part. And, you know, our prayers go out for those business owners and hopefully we can get them back up and running as quickly as possible. With that being said, city manager, do you have any, anything?
I have no items. Mayor Protam and council.
No items? Okay. Our city attorney, Omar?
No items either.
No items. Boy, it's quick. Okay. Well, with that being said, we've already covered five A. And we will adjourn. Next regular city council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, April 25th. And we will be right here in the Community Meeting Center.